Our invocation and Councilmember Susan Eads lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Almighty Heavenly Father, we come before you with humble hearts tonight. Father, we thank you for this occasion and for this council. We thank you for their willingness to serve this great city. Father, we thank you for the sacrifices that their families make and that they make as they serve. Father, I ask that your wisdom and your discernment be upon them tonight as they have difficult decisions that are before them. Father, I pray that decisions are made that are for the good of the whole, that selfish intents would be removed, and that things would be in accordance with your will. Father, our city and our state and our nation needs unity and healing that only you can provide. Father, we ask that you bring us together. Father, we ask that you grant us peace in our great land. And Father, I ask your protection be upon those who are guaranteeing our ability to freely assemble in this place tonight. There are men and women all over the world who are sacrificing time away from family and home, and we ask protection be upon them. Father, we have people who are serving in public safety roles. They're being criticized. They're being belittled. Father, we ask that you give them protection. We thank you so much for Jesus, for the blood that was shed on the cross for us as imperfect human beings. We ask all of these favors in Jesus' holy name. Amen.
Amen.
Do you want me to pledge?
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Please be seated. Go around the horseshoe for community-related announcements. Mr. Lyon, do you have anything?
Saturday, August fifteenth, will be the next cruising for coffee at the Santa Fe Steakhouse, which is at seventy-one oh one southeast twenty-ninth in Sooner Town Center. Cruise in and enjoy a free cup of coffee and show off your ride or admire the classic in new cars and motorcycles. The event begins at eight AM and ends at eleven AM. Last event had a tremendous number of cars there, so lots to see if you go out. And then finally, we encourage residents to sign up for our news flashes and up-to-date information by going to the MidwestCityOK.com website and click on Your Community. That's all I have, Mayor.
Ms. Eads, do you have anything? Anyone else on the horseshoe have any announcements for the community? All right, well, that being said, we have a couple of proclamations we need to do, so go down front. Pastor McDade, come down front, please. This one's a hard one to do for a number of reasons. Chuck McDade was my pastor at Soul Creek Baptist Church for twenty-plus years. He's also served the community as the fire chaplain for as many years, twenty-eight years. And he was a pastor of Soul Creek for thirty-one years before he retired. And so with that being said, it's kind of hard to do this for you, and I hope you know that. Whereas Pastor Charles Chuck McDade has served the Midwest City community for over thirty years as senior pastor at Soul Creek Baptist Church, has volunteered chaplain for the Midwest City Fire Department for twenty-eight years, and is a member of the Memorial Hospital Authority Board of Grantors for from April fourteenth, two thousand nine, to April twenty-fourth, two thousand eighteen. And whereas he's been a member of the Federation of Fire Chaplains for sixteen years, serving as an instructor and was instrumental in working to get Oklahoma Fire Service Chaplains grouped together for the state of Oklahoma. And whereas Pastor McDade has put his heart and soul into caring for the emotional and spiritual needs of our fire department employees, working with critical incident stress management teams, assisting numerous families in funeral arrangements as they dealt through personal tough, personal times, making personal sacrifices always to be available to the fire department employees during particularly difficult emergency calls for service, which could cause mental health issues for responders working the tragedies. So, and I could go on and on and on about this man. He's one of the most godliest men I've ever met. So therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim July twenty-eighth, two thousand twenty, as Charles McDade Day in the City of Midwest City, and hereby urge all citizens of the City of Midwest City to show Pastor McDade your appreciation for his selfless service to our community. Got to party for it. Thank you. Mark Tepley. Come on down. I'm gonna stand on this ledge, so I'm gonna speak as loud as you want. So this is in special recognition of Mark Tepley for loyal and dedicated service to the citizens of Midwest City, Oklahoma. His career from July first, nineteen eighty-five, through May thirty-first, two thousand twenty. It's a great years of service. And Mark, this is to you from the city in recognition, and thank you for your service.
Thank you.
Appreciate working with you. And that's gonna do the problem. It's gonna get good, isn't it? This is. I finally get you. I know Mark and I worked together for a long time over at the PD and hate to see him go, but I'm proud of him, and now he can go fishing all the time, right? Before I got my penny going. He's always dressed for the occasion. Anyway, whereas Captain Mark Tepley began his employment in the City of Midwest City in July of nineteen eighty-five as a police officer and retired in May, two thousand twenty. And whereas Captain Tepley is considered a jack-of-all-trades. Especially fishing. With the police department, and as he has exemplified, a positive calm demeanor under stress and maintain a positive encouraging relationship with fellow officers. He's received many letters of appreciation, commendation, and letters of excellence from the Federal Bureau of Investigation, US Department of Justice, and the Oklahoma State Bureau of Investigation, and a meritorious service award to the police department. Whereas throughout his suburb career, Mark Tepley exhibited a progressive initiative in gaining several grants to better the department and believed in investing his time and training in good moral values that he possesses into his subordinates. And whereas he's led the LEDT, that's Law Enforcement Defensive Driving Training, coordinator instructor, league coordinator for the Honor Guard, lead taser instructor. Well, that's a fun job. And served as many years on SWAT team as a sniper. Whereas Captain Tepley not only worked to keep Midwest City citizens safe, but also volunteered with programs such as Midwest City Honor Guard, Shop with a Cop, and Bowling with Badges. So therefore, I'm Matt Dukes, Mayor of Midwest City, Oklahoma, do hereby proclaim July twenty-third, which was, or June twenty-third, which is actually retirement date, as. We're a little late on that, Mark. As Captain Mark Tepley Day in the City of Midwest City, do hereby proclaim or urge all citizens to show your appreciation to Mark Tepley for his substantial contributions he's made to our community. You want to say anything?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. See you guys.
Where are you going fishing next, Mark?
Public law. Back to this tomorrow, I got a mission I turned on Friday.
Police Department and Fire Department losing two great people as a result of their retirements. Okay, ladies and gentlemen, we move into our consent agenda for the Midwest City Council. These items are placed on the consent agenda so the council, by unanimous consent, can approve routine agenda items by one motion. If any item proposed does not meet with the approval of the council or members of the audience wish to discuss an item, it will be removed and heard in regular order. We've been requested to remove item twenty-nine from the consent agenda. With that being said, an entertaining motion to approve except for item twenty-nine.
Motion to approve except item twenty-nine.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Mr. Hawk, you requested that item twenty-nine be removed. Could you step before the podium? Fred Hawk? One more time, Mr. Hawk?
Apparently that's last time.
Huh?
Said apparently that must be from last time.
Hmm. Okay, with that being said, Mr. Hawk is not here to discuss item twenty-nine, so an entertaining motion to approve item twenty-nine.
Motion to approve, second.
Got a motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. We move into our discussion items for this agenda. Mr. Lyon, discussion item number one.
Discussion item number one, PC two thousand forty-five, public hearing with discussion and consideration of an ordinance to redistrict from R six, single-family residential, to RHD, high-density residential for the property described as a part of the southwest corridor, section twelve, township eleven north, range two west, located at twenty-five hundred South Douglas Boulevard. Mr. Harless.
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This says, this property is six point eight nine acres, and in nineteen eighty-seven, the west two hundred feet of the property, which fronts onto South Douglas Boulevard, was rezoned from single-family residential to C three, community commercial. A request to extend the C three zoning, a hundred and fifty feet to the east, was approved in two thousand eighteen. The rest of the parcel was unchanged and remained zoned R six, single-family detached residential. The owners of the property are requesting to rezone the portion of the property that is currently zoned R six. High-density residential for, I'm sorry, rezoned from R six to RHD, high-density residential for multifamily residential development. The future land use map within the conference of plan identifies the areas of high-density residential. A preliminary plot for the entire parcel was approved in February of two thousand twenty. If the rezoning request is approved, the applicant will need to apply to amend the preliminary plot to meet the requirements of multifamily residential rather than single-family residential. Planning Commission recommended approval, and the city, action is at the discretion of the city council. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Public hearing. It's a public hearing.
This is a public hearing and public discussion. Does anyone have any, anything to bring forth counsel on this discussion item? Is there any questions of Mr. Harless or of the applicant?
I have a couple of questions for the applicant. If, in the council notes, there's a mention of a meeting that was held that the property owner, Chris Webster, who's a Midwest City kid that actually moved to California. His dad is here still looking, but he flew in about a month or so ago. That was the first time I'd met him, but I talked to him on the telephone, and I talked to him on the telephone as late as three-thirty this afternoon. We had a meeting, and people from the housing addition were there. We had probably, I think, six or eight people that were there. There was a couple of concerns that were brought up. One, which is the additional crime that could be brought to the area. And the police department provided the stats, and there didn't appear to be, from when I reviewed it, a significant crime problem in that area. And they were making reference to an apartment complex that's pretty close, and in fact, it's gonna butt that property. So I don't, I think we had that problem, where that question solved. There was a couple of other concerns, and this is where you'll come in. Most of y'all know that we, the city's been dealing with a drainage problem there in the orchard for the last several years, that they've spent a significant amount of time and resources in fixing. And Mr. Webster was basically told right up front that if this addition or any movement of dirt was gonna affect the progress that the city has made to correct this problem, that as far as we were concerned, it was a moot point. Is that pretty much, no Brandon Bundy's in the back, too?
Yes, sir.
But that has been dealt with, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's not gonna be any issue with the drainage that's been fixed? Their movement of dirt won't affect what we've done. Is that correct?
That is correct.
Okay. There's two other issues that were, that were brought up, one of which is the trees. And there's some concern by a resident, a legitimate concern, in the orchard addition. The north, this is gonna be in two separate, two separate movements, correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Can you say your name and your address?
Sure. My name is John Doyle. I'm with Cedar Creek Engineering. Our address is one-one-nine-one-two North Pennsylvania.
You were at the meeting that the issues with the trees were addressed, correct?
Yes, sir.
And there's two streets. It's Cherry Lane and Pear Street. And it's a corner in kind of a, maybe a half of a U, where there's some houses that are gonna be pretty close to the property line, if I remember correctly, right? And the request that was made, and we all realize that it can't be in blood to do this, but there's some residents, and rightfully so, have some concern about the privacy there because there are some very mature, very tall trees there. And if I remember right, you can't promise a hundred percent because you don't know what the movement of dirt, irrigation, all that will be. But if I remember right, you're, Mr. Webster, and you both made the statements that you guys would do everything in your power to serve, to save those trees because what would end up happening is you would have to go in there and replace them with trees that end up costing you all money versus if there's trees already there, it makes sense to save them. Is that inaccurate?
Yes, that's correct.
And what's the, is that, that's still the plan, right?
Oh, yes.
To save the trees particularly.
As much as possible.
Okay. The other concern is that by rezoning this piece of property, especially since it's not being done with a SUD or a PUD, that you could give us the proposal today, and there's really not a whole lot we could do. Correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Harless, that they could change the plan tomorrow, once it's approved. Is that accurate?
That's correct. Once they have the zoning, since it's not a SUD or a PUD, it would be difficult to hold them to pretty pictures. Yes, sir.
Okay. This is a pretty high-end apartment complex proposal. Well, as a result of that, I made a phone call at three-thirty this afternoon to Mr. Webster. Like I said, I don't know, I know him now, but I'd never met him till he flew in several weeks ago to have this community meeting, and he assured me, and he told me that you could confirm it, that the plan that you have given to us today, the high-end apartment, is the plan that you are moving forward with, that there may be some changes, but it certainly won't diminish what the change, what department is, that this is, this is the plan. We're not gonna see a plan tomorrow that's different, especially since we've rezoned it. This is what our expectations are, is this high, high-end apartment complex. Is that an accurate statement?
Yes, sir.
And that's the instructions he's given you to move forward with.
Yes, sir.
Any other further questions of Mr. Harless or the applicant? That being said, an entertaining motion.
Make a motion to approve. Second.
I have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention. Motion carries. Thanks for being here tonight. Discussion item number two, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion item two, PC two thousand forty-six, public hearing with discussion and consideration of an ordinance redistricting from Plan U Development, a PUD to amended Plan U Development for the property described as part of the lot seven through ten of the Thomas Acres addition addressed at ninety-seventy northeast thirteenth street.
Thanks again, Mr. Lyon. This two-acre PUD governed by RMD, medium-density residential district for the area of request was approved in October, two thousand nineteen. There was much discussion regarding the design of the development at both the Planning Commission and City Council meetings. The Planning Commission recommended denial, but the PUD was approved by the City Council. Since that time, the applicant has requested to make modifications to the approved PUD. Modifications included reconfiguring the design of the homes so that each dwelling unit has an attached garage. This was a concern during the original review as garages for both dwelling units of each duplex were placed at the end of the structure, meaning that the occupant of the unit on either end would have to walk outside from their garage to their dwelling unit. Additionally, the original PUD consisted of eleven residential duplex structures with twenty-two dwelling units. This request increases the density by adding one more duplex structure with two dwelling units. Additionally, the twenty-six-foot-wide road has been shortened. The storage units have been increased in size, and the detention pond has been modified. All future maintenance of the private drive, detention pond, water, sewer, house lines, and all other portions of the development will be a responsibility of the property owner. A single private drive is proposed to provide access to each lot. Within this proposal, the applicant plans to retain ownership of the entire development and rent out the individual dwelling units. Planning Commission approved the recommended approval of the application, and this is at the discretion of the council. I will note that a couple of things. We've had one citizen ask that they really don't wanna see duplexes back here, but this is not about necessarily rezoning back to a single-family. They already have duplex zoning. And staff looked at this, and this was obviously an improvement on the original design. So with that said, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
This is a pub, go ahead. This is a public discussion, and Ms. Alice Thomas, would you like to come and address the council, ma'am? Would you adjust the microphone for her, Billy?
I live on fourteen oh four Douglas.
Could you state your name and address for us?
Alice Thomas, fourteen oh four North Douglas. I just wanna protest it because it's been in my family, my husband's family, for seventy-five years. And I know they wouldn't want, want this duplexes. I'd like it to be a single-family dwelling for, one for each lot. There were four lots. And I'm just doing it for my husband's family.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Harless, what was the modification to the detention?
Do you remember what the modification was?
I don't believe they have a modification as far as from the original PUD to today's PUD.
It says the detention pond has been modified in the executive summary. So did they take away or add to?
No, they wouldn't have. It'll meet requirements, and I remember us talking about it, and I don't remember exactly what it was. Do you remember what the?
It wasn't, it was just the shape to allocate to the size that we wanted to make sure that the head grew out.
Is the applicant in the audience?
Yes, sir.
Do you come state your name and address for the, for the record?
Adam Stevens, twelve four hundred South Hawassee, Oklahoma City.
And you're the, you're gonna be the builder or the?
I'm the applicant and owner of the facility or the property.
That's gonna be a lot of duplexes in there.
Yeah, the way, with the, the only reason that we did the design layout change was, A, I wanted to satisfy, even though the Planning Commission denied it, and we got approval through the City Council and could have built that, I took their suggestions to heart, and once we gave it back to the engineer, he came up with a superior design that actually would facilitate the people that lived there, the tenants there, a whole lot better with the attached garage for each unit. And from an aesthetic standpoint, was much superior. I mean, still gonna have rollover curbing, and, you know, it's gonna be gated, you know, very high-end.
It is gonna be gated?
Yes. Yeah, so it's not gonna be, it'll be stuff that increases the property value around there. And we know the district. We've talked about that in length, Ms. Allen. So it's something that I think the area can be proud of and continue to bring that expansion of the city where I think everybody here would like to see in a nicer manner.
And the change to drainage was merely reshaping the detention?
Yeah.
But didn't we approve this in two thousand? Was this approved in?
We did. All we're doing here is a design layout change.
Okay.
It's, yeah, because I guess they said that they were.
So what?
Yeah, under our ordinances, it gives me, as the director, the authority to bring things back to the Planning Commission and council, depending on how the changes are laid out. And with this proposal, the original proposal versus the proposal you're seeing today, we get together as staff and we see a new proposal and talk about how those changes are done, and whether it's increasing density, increasing the detention, whatever the case may be. We talk it over, and since this was controversial going, I shouldn't say controversial, but it was turned down by the Planning Commission, recommended for denial, and then recommended for the council, by the council for approval, we decided to bring it back because we don't wanna see something going up out in the field that is different than what was proposed and caused to, a work stop order to answer questions about why this is different than what went through the City Council. So that's why you're reseeing, and the items are out, laid out here as to what the differences were.
Any further discussion of the applicant or Ms. Thomas or Mr. Harless? Chair, entertain a motion.
So I wanna know this. With the changes, and this is gonna be gated, so with the changes, what, is it gonna be a problem with how it's laid out towards someone's house or towards a residence? What is the, I know she mentioned, what was the lady mentioning about the duplexes?
She was just mentioning that her family's owned it for seventy-five years and then sold it to me, I think, is.
So I think there's two questions here.
Yeah.
One is, the lady that spoke a while ago, she, it was in her, her family for seventy-five years. One is, the lady that spoke a while ago, she, she, it was in her, her, her family for seventy-five years, and she's disappointed that it's gone to duplexes. And that zoning was approved.
And what is?
Two thousand nineteen. As far as the gate, it's, it's going to be a private, a sub, or the private subdivision or not, section, not subdivided, but it'll be one lot. It's a private community, and so they'll provide access and, to the, to, to public facilities like trash service and those things. But no, not the public will not be allowed to, to enter the residences.
Were you done? I'm sorry. Do you still live out there, ma'am?
Yes.
Do you live adjacent to where this building is?
In between it and Douglas.
Oh, yes, I also own two lots, five and six.
Thank you.
Yeah, as far as that goes, it's the same.
Cause any further question? Once again, Chair to entertain a motion?
Well, if it's gated, I don't have any, I'm not having a problem with it. It's a gated community. And how many, again, I'm going to ask you, how many duplexes?
Twelve.
Twelve.
Yeah, just increased it by one because of the layout actually facilitated.
And it's going to be single or, or family? What is, what is a duplex?
Duplex where two families live in? I mean, it's just, I don't know that, I don't know if I understand it.
What type of duplexes are they? Single or?
Yeah, single.
Family, single, combination?
I mean, it's a three-bedroom, two-bath.
What?
Three-bed, two-bath.
Right next, right next to each other.
Okay.
Yeah, and then duplex form where two will be attached.
All right.
You know, granite countertops, hardwood floors, stuff like that, nice.
Why entertain a motion to approve?
I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I'll second it.
A motion and a second, any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye. And I'll be keeping my eyes on it, okay?
Yeah, I'm still going to contact you when it's, if I show it to you.
Abstention, motion, we've got one abstention.
One extension?
Motion carries. Thank you, sir, for being here. Ms. Thomas, thank you for taking your time to be here, ma'am. Moving to item, discussion item number three, Mr. Lyon.
PC two thousand forty-seven, discussion and consideration of approval of the proposed preliminary plat of Freedom Villas described as part of southeast quarter, section thirty-five, township twelve north, range two west, located at eighty-seven twelve East Main Street. Mr. Harless?
Thanks again, Mr. Lyon. This item is a request to subdivide a single four-point-seven-nine acre parcel into nineteen individual parcels for two-family residential development. The property is currently zoned RHD, high-density residential. The zoning does allow for the development of duplexes. The applicant is proposing water, sewer, and street extensions to several, to, I'm sorry, to serve all of the duplexes, or to all the lots. No variance to any of the requirements and the zoning ordinances for the development. In RHD, will be allowed within the development. Planning, Planning Commission have recommended approval, and action is the discretion of the City Council. I do want to note that we had a, Mr. Goldschlager ask a few questions at, at the, the Planning Commission, and then also send in a, a letter to, to the City Manager's office. I don't know, is that something, sir, that I need to read or?
I think, I think City Clerk's going to read it into the record.
Okay, perfect.
Okay. Glenn Goldschlager of fourteen oh nine Evergreen has provided an email and asked to have his concerns be made a public record as he is unable to attend the evening's council meeting. To the Midwest City Council members regarding discussion item PC twenty forty-seven, I would like to go on record as being against this development. It's too close to North Oaks, which is the same type of housing in which the city has spent thousands of taxpayer dollars to try and improve. It just seems wrong to now add to this problem when you're making real progress. But more importantly, it adds additional rental property to a city which already has too much, forty-two percent as of the last census. With all the problems which that entails, why not put all these rental property requests on hold until you can develop a comprehensive plan to deal with the rental property we have? Yes, I know the city tried to develop a rental registration program, which our state stopped, but that doesn't mean you can't develop something. I know this land is zoned for this development, and there's nothing I can do, but please think about this before you let it go forward. We can do better. Thank you and be safe, Glenn.
Thank you.
I do have some concerns, that's in my ward. And as you know, a lot of houses is being built, and my ward has a lot of drainage problems. And that's one thing I'm really worried about, even though that's, that's another two on North Oaks. I just have a problem with the, with the drainage there. Have they got any plan to fix that in that area? On that side, what you're talking about, you've got press, flu schools, that backs up to another vacant lot closer to there. I actually went up past there twice and looked at that, I looked at the property there. Also, my concerns too is the duplexes there, is it going to be gated or not? Because you've got a residential area, and I don't think they even know what's going on in that area right now, other than the, the new animal shelter that's going in. And they get some opposition later from the residents in that area about these duplexes being built. Again, my concern is the drainage.
Okay.
Because we kind of get caught with that already.
Yeah, so this was already zoned. This is not a rezoning hearing, but I, I understand your concern. This is already zoned in the comprehensive plan or, or in the land use plan as, as, as a multifamily or duplex, duplex zoning. The, one of the lots is, is, says nineteen lot development. It's eighteen lots for duplexes, and one of them is for, for the drainage, the detention facility. I'll ask the city engineer or the applicant to address further concerns on the drainage. Mr. Bundy?
The drainage, for the most part, historically, right now goes to the north to Main Street, and to the west, and to a vacant lot. The, the proposed development will have a detention pond, which will take up most of the, the water that comes off of the development. There will be some bypass that goes into the property to the west. I put in my report that it needs to be a sheet flow. A lot of times, engineers will concentrate that water, and then that's what, what happens. It's, even though it's the same amount of water, it's concentrated, and then that usually is what causes problems. So we'll keep an eye on what type of water comes off of that lot and try to keep it at sheet flow.
There any further questions about this item? Hearing none, Chair to entertain a motion? Nobody willing to make a motion on this item? Item five, there's still a lack of a motion.
I think I, I guess I, I feel I'm responsible to inform you that if no actions, and, and I don't have this off the top of my head, but since this is a platting requirement, that it, within sixty days of the application, that it automatically is approved. So if no actions taken, that it will automatically be approved.
Well, then we're taking no action, so in sixty days it's going to be approved.
Is that how you see it, Kelly?
Billy, if, if Councilman Bowen's issues are the drainage, is that what? What can we do now to make sure that her concerns? Because if, from what I understand, if we?
Pat, can I interrupt and ask a point of order? We took no action. Can we open this back up and continue?
Yes.
Okay, I didn't mean to interrupt, Pat, just making sure.
That's fine. If, if I'm hearing you right, if, if we do nothing, then it goes through, and it's going to go through as is.
As proposed, yes.
Which has, which means that her concerns are, are going to be not addressed, possibly.
Yeah, and, and if there was specifically something on the drainage that we could try to address here at the council, and the applicant is here, and also, you know, staff has looked at this and, and feel that the drainage is, is resolved. But if there's something here that, 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 if there's something specific, we could certainly move forward with it and, and address it during the improvement plans. But I, I can assure you that staff has heard the council's concerns over drainage in the past, and, and we, we, we take it very seriously.
We have the applicant here.
Good evening, Mark Grubbs, Grubbs Consulting, eighteen hundred South Sarah Road, on behalf of the applicant. We have done the required preliminary study, detention study with this preliminary plat, and have proven to staff that we are meeting the ordinance and we are not increasing runoff from this property. We also have agreed to discharge the pond into the underground storm sewer system that is adjacent to our site. Furthermore, we have also agreed to improve the existing storm sewer opening that's on, at our northeast corner of the property. So we, you, you have a drainage ordinance that's in order, and that, that drainage ordinance says we cannot increase the runoff from our property, from this property, and we will meet that, so. And we have, we've already done a preliminary drainage study that has proven that to staff, so.
Another thing that's my concern is in that area, we have enough duplexes in that area right now that are not being well maintained.
This, I'm sorry. This, this property, the, the, the structures, the residential structures to be built on this property will be in excess of three hundred thousand dollars each. They also have an H O A that is, that requires the maintenance of all the lawns. So you, each, each unit has to be involved in that H O A, and they're, all the grass is mowed at the same time. It's all up kept, so the property is kept nice, and that's how they enforce that. So these are going to have quartz, you know, quartz countertops, hardwood floors, three hundred thousand-plus structures, dollar structures with high rental rates, so.
Has the H O A been presented to the city at all for review? Anybody?
It's required at the final plat.
It's required at final plat.
So they haven't seen it yet, but they will, is that where we're headed with that? I was asking the city.
We'll get to review.
Clarification question since we've opened this back up? Mr. Bundy? Where did he go? I have a question. Maybe I misunderstood you. But what I took away from your statement earlier was that there was going to be some type of increased burden or affect to the property to the west. Is that correct, or did I misunderstand?
It, it's not increased. There will, there will still be some water that goes to the west as it is today.
Sorry. Even with everything that the applicant has explained as far as the discharge to their storm drains and so forth, there's still going to be some water go off to the west, to the property to the west?
Yes, as they presented it, there is a portion of it that will not go into the detention pond. But overall, on the whole, entire site, it will be equal or less than what it is today.
Our drainage report actually shows that we are decreasing the runoff of water to the property owner to the west, even though some does bypass it. You have a certain, a larger amount that drains towards that property now than will in a, in a developed state. So we've proven that it will be less.
Thank you both for that clarification.
With all the discussion, Ms. City Attorney, is, is a point of order, can the Chair reconsider a motion on this particular item?
Yes.
Is there a reconsideration by members of the council to take action on this?
I, I would like to defer to the learned councilwoman for more, three, please.
I'm going to recommend not approving.
So is that your motion?
That's my motion.
Okay, so we fully understand, Billy, what happens if we don't approve this? Just now, I'm just trying to get the whole thing.
Well, I think it, I think it puts us in a little bit of a holding pattern of question because if we're going to turn it down, but they already have the zoning, and in order to subdivide the property, which is what they're requesting to do, they meet the subdivision requirements. And so if there's something that, that the council would like to see them address, please let us know, and we'll go try to address that, and, and hopefully the applicant would be agreeable to bringing it, bringing it back with, addressing those issues.
I'd like to review it a little, a little bit longer, is what I'd like to do.
So maybe we could push it forward to the next council meeting?
So are we better to table or to go deny? Can I show you?
What's the sixty-day deadline going?
So, so as the applicant, we have a, in the subdivision regulations, from the time that the, the applicant makes an application, the council is required to make some type of vote on it, whether to approve or disapprove it, or this is to keep from holding up developers because they're vested in the property at this point. And so, yeah, and so the, the deadline hangs out there. Well, from the time they make the application to the time they go through to the Planning Commission, to the time they get to here, the clock is, is ticking and that, so.
What would that be?
They can, the applicant could, could agree to extend that deadline, and hopefully they would in order to, to help resolve any issues.
What is the cutoff date?
I don't know what the actually applicant, application date is, but.
I think Ms. Goldschlager.
I would have to look, just to be sure. The August eleventh meeting, I think we would, we would be safe. And if Mr. Grubbs is agreeable to it, he could submit a letter to waive the sixty-day requirement, and that would give the council more time to be able to.
To, to be fair to him, could he agree to waive it instead of an open-ended definitive amount of time to a closed-end time? Because it wouldn't be fair to him to say, yes, waive it, we, we never do anything because you waived it. Can he, so what, how many days? Would you be willing, want to, to stretch it out a little bit more?
So maybe we could go to the second meeting in, in August?
Currently, currently, let me make sure I'm understanding. Currently, we're requesting a continuance to a future council date?
To address the drainage issue.
To address the drainage issues to the agreement of the council.
To address the drainage issues? Okay. And you're requesting a, when's the next council date?
Well, it would be difficult to meet the, the next one with any type of answer, so the second, second meeting in, in August would be?
Twenty-fifth.
Twenty-fifth?
Okay. My client's not here, but just, just so I understand and I can make the right decision, we're going to, we're continuing it to discuss drainage, and I, I guess I need to understand, in this, in this time that we're moving forward, are there certain, I mean, because we're required to meet the drainage ordinance. So what would we, I guess, trying to understand, what would we, what would we be looking at if we've already shown that we meet the drainage ordinance? I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you.
Satisfying her. I, I think it's just answering, is it just answering your questions, just to?
Yeah.
Just spend some time with her and see if you can get her on board, that's all she's asking.
Okay, and can we do that by the, by the next council date? Are you saying that's too?
That's too soon.
Yeah.
The twenty-fifth would be the last council meeting, and August would be the last.
There's only two? And the, and the middle of August is too, too soon?
But we don't have a meeting.
Oh, okay. So the next one is the end of August? Okay, we'll agree to the continuance.
Billy, Bill, I want to ask you a question. You said that this is zoned for what now, for what type of housing?
It's, it's zoned for duplexes and what their proposed use is. They already have the zoning. This is, this is a, they're requesting to subdivide the property.
So, okay, so there will, at some point in time, unless they rezon it again, it is already zoned to duplexes, and that's what's going to be built there?
Excuse me, could you, could you?
Excuse me, could you, could you schedule a site visit with Ms. Bowen to take her and walk the site, show her exactly what it's gonna do, and also conceptual drawings would have been nice to have in the packet and?
I've got, I have elevations of the product that they're, I mean, if you would like me to pass it around.
That's what you can show her when?
If you could walk the property, show her the, the elevation drawings and and then get her on board, then then we'll be, then on the, by the second meeting in August, we should be good to go. Does that sound like a deal?
Would you like to meet in the office or would you like to meet in the field? We could have slides.
Is that good with you, S B?
Okay.
Is that good with you, S B? All right. So suggestion by the chair with that we take no action on this and continue it on the second meeting in August.
Thank you all. Thank you.
Personal privilege, I request a five minute recess at this time.
Yeah, I was getting, getting ready to that. We take a five minute recess. We lose favors? Oh, there you go.
She was not lost.
Down the hall.
Anything, I'm good. I got it taken care of.
Take care.
Yep. Ms. Allen? Okay, we're back in session and Mr. Lyon, item number four.
P C two thousand forty-eight, discussion consideration of an ordinance amending Appendix A zoning regulations of the Midwest City Code by amending section four point five point two light industrial restricted, section four point nine point two use chart and providing for repealer and severability and setting an effective date. Billy?
Thank you, Mr. Lyon. This ordinance evolved out of the original ordinance, when you remember when we brought through the medical marijuana ordinance and and we knew there would be some changes as we learned more what the state law would be and how the state law evolved and how things were defined and everything. Well, this is a result of that. As the, as one of our applicants came before you, oh, gosh, it's been about a year ago, they were wanting to do light processing and the state law separated light processing from regular processing. And what staff learned and what we learned through going to ACOG and some other communities and stuff was that light processing would, could be even rolling a, a cigarette, a cigarette machine was considered light processing. And they have these little crock pot looking things that are, that are used to boil the oils out of the, out of the leaves and stuff, or out of the, the material. I don't really know what I'm talking about on how to process that stuff. But anyway, it's light stuff. It's stuff you plug into to one ten. And the state law calls that different. And so what we had is some, 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 some businesses in the community that were wanting to do light processing in their, in their, in their businesses. And so where this ordinance went through the ordinance review committee, I want to thank Mayor, you and and also Councilman Byrne and Councilwoman Eads for helping us bring this through the ordinance review committee and then also staff, particularly Kelly, for helping to go through ACOG and and learning to what, understand what some of these were and also the fire department because once this goes through on a, on a special use permit in C three, it will give the, there will be conditions that are put on it through the, through the process and the fire department and also our staff will go in and see if they're violating that, 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 the special parameters for, for light use. So anyway, this is a result of, of that and it permits it as a special use in C three and by right in C four and then also industrial, industrial zoning districts, so.
So this brings us in line with state law and also protects the city as we go forward, correct?
It does, and I think it also holds us in the spirit of what we were trying to do from the, from the very beginning on, on our ordinance, our marijuana ordinance was.
Motion to approve.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicators saying aye? Opposed? Extensions, motions? Thanks.
Thank you.
And also thanks to all the staff for working through this mess, we appreciate it. I'm gonna, I'm gonna ask the indulgence of the council to move from the regular order as stated, and we have a presentation by our juvenile staff on our juvenile program and ask that they, they go move forward to this portion so we can get them home and out of here.
This is a, a result of questions that members of the council had during the budget session regarding the program and some of the operational responsibilities as we have worked our own juvenile program. We don't utilize the county program as a first source. We have our own internal juvenile program and our own judge, which is Judge Porter's here tonight. Good to have you here, Judge. So we're gonna turn this over to Yolanda, who is the supervisor, not only of the court, but the juvenile program.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Because I have a little time limit, I'm gonna go ahead and jump right into this. As you stated, I am Yolanda Whitlow. I have, have, my little bit of history is I have a bachelor's in criminal justice, my master's in criminal justice administration. I have worked in the mental health field for four years and I worked in Oklahoma County Juvenile Bureau in the probation department for eight, four of those being in supervisory position. And I've been with the city for over eighteen years. The juvenile probation officer is Amber Simmons and she has a bachelor's in criminal justice and is currently working on her master's. She has been with the youth services of Oklahoma County in their family junction as a residential advisor as well as a youth service specialist. She's been with Oklahoma County Juvenile Bureau where I was able to get her over here in the probation department for two years. And this Friday will be her thirty year anniversary being with the city. She's doing a fantastic job. A little history of our juvenile program is it was developed in nineteen ninety-four by the ex-city council member, Rick Rice. An interlocal agreement was signed and adopted by the Oklahoma County District Court and the city of Midwest City. Municipal ordinances were then created and revised for juveniles. The mission of our juvenile probation and services department is to provide rehabilitative services to youth and their families through education, community-based programs, referrals, and enforcement to decrease incidences of juvenile delinquency. What we want in, to make that a little short, is we want to get them here before they advance or graduate into the juvenile system with Oklahoma County or the state level. We feel that this is a special program because it's, it's kind of elite. There's not a lot of municipalities that actually have this program. The next five slides that you're going to look at are the various crimes that we handle on the juvenile department. The first type of crimes are criminal, crimes against persons, as you see, is assaults, A and Bs, carrying concealed weapons. The next are drug offenses. Next, we have crimes against property. And then some of the other crimes that pretty much will, is truancy and curfew, which is directly on, related to juveniles, tobacco, fighting in public, in the park after hours. In the next slide, all of our juvenile proceedings are closed. They're confidential, so we only are able to have one family in at a time. And what will happen is when a juvenile is cited by an officer, and we are received that citation as well as a demographic piece of paper that lets us know who we need to contact as the responsible adult for that juvenile. At that time, we process it and they are given a, letters mailed to them with the court date and time to appear in court. And that is where they are then introduced to the judge. And they are able to enter a plea of either guilty, not guilty, or no contest. If they so choose, they have the right to plead guilty or no contest and just say, I want to forego probation and just pay the fine. At that time, we let them fill out the proper paperwork and they're just, like, can either pay it in full and the case is dismissed, or the judge can grant them a payment plan and he will make those deciding factors with that. And jump in here, Judge. If they decide to plead no, no contest, they can go on probation. At that time, they will be mailed an office visit letter in which they will meet with Amber and discuss plan, you know, we will do an interview with them to decide on what type of requirements that we want to put on that plan. It is not a general flat-based program. We want to individualize that in regards to the issues at hand with that individual juvenile. Again, to try to keep them from moving on to the state system. During court, after they have met with Amber, and we submit a juvenile probation plan to the judge, where at that time he can either approve it, he can amend it, or he can reject it. If he approves it, we sign the original and a copy is given to the juvenile and family. If he amends it, which means he can add additional requirements or he can remove requirements from the plan. If he rejects it, means that he can cancel that out, assess full fines and fees, or he can dismiss the case altogether. That's his choice. Now, juvenile also, I forgot, was they can plead not guilty if they feel that they're innocent and take it to trial. Even though they take it to trial, if they are so-called found guilty, they can still do probation. They will have that opportunity because, again, we want to try to address the issues at hand. At the office visit, the probation officer has a series of questions that we go over. And the couple, couple of the next slides are about our questionnaire, all the questions that we ask. We do get a little invasive, but it's with the purpose, again, we're trying to find out why they are behaving the way they are so that we can cater that probation plan to their behavior to try to address that as well as what behavior may be going on with the parent. on with the parent. And you see, we have demographic information, their medical, financial, any criminal history with the parents or siblings that may be in the home. Psychological issues, which has been on the rise here lately, a lot of mental issues. Again, once during the office visit, once a plan is, we figure out what issue is going on, we will give the family and the juvenile a draft of what idea, what we're looking at as far as incorporating in a probation plan. Let them go home, let them think and discuss a bit, and then we, Amber will get with me, and we kind of staff the case to see if there's anything that we can additionally, you know, add to it, or if we need to go a different route. At that time, they are given a new court date for their probation hearing, where they'll have to come back before the judge. And again, back to presenting the plan to the judge to see if he's going to adopt it, amend it, or reject it. We have juvenile court every first and third Wednesday at 1:30. And again, all of those proceedings are closed. A couple of the next slides are in regards to what type of probation requirements that we will, you will find on one of our probation plans. As far as community service, restitution, you know, if they're old enough, we may want them to get a job if they're not doing anything but sitting on playing video games. Essays. Tutoring, mentoring. If there's any type of drug, we'll do counseling, especially with family counseling. We also do parenting, you know, we'll make referrals to parenting classes for the parents if we see that there's some issues or some help that they may need. Now, if a juvenile, which we know sometimes may not be in compliance, we can do additional community service work, we can add additional requirements, or if they fight out, we can assess full fines and fees. But one that I did leave off is depending on if I can also transfer them to Oklahoma County if I feel that they need more assistance. Because at this level, we are quite limited on the services that we're able to provide. So if I feel that we can't do this child any justice, I will make that transfer. One of our goals that we're always doing is Amber's always out in the community, trying to find businesses that will work with our youth as far as the community service work. If there's mentoring, because some kids, you know, will tell us, we always ask them, where do you see yourself in five years? College, boatech, you know, working full-time? We really want to, if there's something that they're interested in in mechanics, we would like to try to find a place that would actually let them shadow them for a little while, just to plant that seed, you know, to try to help them. Well, as you know, that services are so limited right now. And we also to help the families if they need to get inpatient, you know, we try to give them those services. And to back up, we don't only service kids that get cited with probation. I get multiple calls that officers will be out there and make contact with somebody. They may not cite them, but they'll give them my name and number to call, that I can try to help give them some services and guide them with those youth, you know. And a lot of families feel that. It's nice to have that assistance, they feel. And again, the main objective is to try to turn their negative todays into a positive tomorrow. And anything that we can do at this level, instead of turning them over to the county where they haven't committed a worse enough offense, they will be pushed to the side. And our youth here in this community, we want to try to save.
Ms. Yolanda, I have a question, please.
Yes, ma'am.
So, one of the things that I see a lot about, and I have a child, by the way, just to say, who's sixteen, about to start in seventeen, so, like, I get a lot of play in this area.
Yes, ma'am.
Is about classes, or the request for classes, or the want for classes, on how to be a successful adult. Things like, you know, how to balance a checkbook.
Life skills, yes.
How to change a tire, blah, 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 type of thing. I'm wondering, is that something that we can maybe look at putting together?
That would be awesome.
Kids that are in our juvenile program, even if it was having some live presenters and staring around the horse wheel, lots of talented people here.
Yes, ma'am.
Lots of talented people in our community. And/or even, you know, clipping some videos together, like YouTube on how to change a tire, like, maybe not getting out there and causing a liability risk. I say this with all due respect to the city attorney. But, you know, I mean, like, these are the things that somebody, you wish somebody had taught you, but you don't know.
Yes, ma'am.
And I know a lot of thirty-somethings right now that, you know, they probably should have taken that class when they were somewhere between fifteen and seventeen, because they missed a whole lot of basic things. Is that something that is ever discussed as?
It's very needed, yes. Life skills is lacking with a lot of our youth and adults, as you would stated, their parents, yes.
Is that something that even Oklahoma County in their juvenile program offers anything like that, or that could be?
I know that they did have, like, a life skills that they did with, you know, they separated the boys and the girls. I used to take advantage of that, but when services started dwindling, they were only able to provide that availability to their youth.
Their population.
Yes. Yes. I used to be able to, for sanctions, I would do it one opportunity with Canadian County, we would actually transport them down there for three to five days, and they would be housed there. And then come back, and they would have to meet, you know, because if they were acting out or running away. But with beds, the state shut that down for me. So at this level, it's, we had to be very creative. We're still having to be creative on what we can do to try to help our youth.
Is there any more questions, Ms. Whitlow?
Yes. I had talked to with you about a lady, she does basic life skills here in Midwest City.
Ms. Hooks, Dr. Hooks, yes.
Did you ever, did you?
We have reached out, we have been playing phone tag, but I had Amber, gave her the number, and the chief actually brought me some cards and worked mine down. Yes, we are very, she's going to hopefully be a wonderful contact.
And she teaches them checkbooks, buying groceries, you know, basically sort of providing them for life.
Yes.
And I thought it was very interesting, because sometimes children don't get the life skills in their environments. And I think it's good to make sure that they at least have life skills in order to be productive, considering if they're having, you know, some issues, things they may not understand. So I did, I did think that it was a really good suggestion that, you know, maybe you are one of them. But when I talk, if I talk to her again, I'm trying to get in touch with you and make sure that you are in contact, because I really feel it's needed.
Oh, it absolutely is.
Basic life skills is needed. Not, most people don't know how to do, most young people don't even know anything about a checkbook, so. But I want to just say this, I have a passion for children and youth, and for them having a chance in life to be productive citizens, and, you know, and be productive growing as they mature. And so I was very concerned about the juvenile program. And I just wanted to make sure that I know as much as possible, and I think we all need to know as much as possible about this program, because this is meant with city citizens. And we sure want the best for our youth and our children. So I really, thank you for this presentation. It's really great. You are doing a good job. I do support you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, Yolanda.
Just really quickly, we're going to volunteer, I bet we can get Ms. Price Allen, the learned councilwoman from Ward Five, also, Ms. Bowen, the learned councilwoman from Ward Three, and I would like to volunteer to try to help you all facilitate some type of a life skill class for juveniles. So would you mind just reaching out to us?
Yes, ma'am.
And we could all maybe have a little lunch or something and see if we can't come up with something?
Yes, ma'am.
Yolanda?
Yes.
Wonderful presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, and thank you for what you do. I do have a couple of questions because I am kind of a numbers guy.
Yes.
Fifteen, sixteen to nineteen twenty, there's a huge reduction in the number of juveniles that have gone through this program.
Yes.
Which probably is a detriment, not a positive, because this isn't a program that gets them in the system per se, and it's on their permanent record, like you had addressed. It helps to figure out where some of the problems might be.
Mm-hmm.
Help the families learn coping skills, help the kids learn sometimes better judgment.
Yes.
And when the families and the kids learn these, I would assume recidivism would be much lower.
That's right.
So, and this is not directed at you, I am just, because you don't have any control over the number of kids that come through this. I'm concerned that we have so much fewer kids, because I think we're doing those kids a disservice by, and their parents a disservice, and our community a disservice by not getting them in front of, I'm assuming it's Judge Howell, correct?
No.
Judge Porter.
Yes.
Two honorable men, you can understand why I get confused. You have a heart for juvenile kids, which is a redundant thing to say, I apologize. I think that we need to make the effort, especially with the reputation that you have, what you have done and the reputation you have, to make sure that we're not making the decision as our law enforcement officer on the street to give them a pass. But to get them in front of you, so you can help them with life skills, to make sure that if there's a family in crisis, you find out and get the help that they need. Do you disagree? Judge Porter?
Joel Porter, and I'm the juvenile judge. No, sir, I do not disagree. I think that's a point well-taken. And as far as the numbers that are going down, as you stated, it's just a matter of what tickets are being written out there in the field to have people to come before us. And then also, I'd like to say that I've been the juvenile judge now for five years, so I would like to think that some of that is the success that we've been doing by not having the recidivism rate as high as it was, as it is right now, meaning it's lower right now than what it was before. So I think that's a part of the success from what we've been doing as far as Yolanda and Amber and just, we don't see a lot of the same children coming through every year or every six months that we did before. We're seeing new children, new people. And so that's refreshing, I take it, from my part, that we're seeing new people and not the same people constantly in and come in and in and out. So realistically, we're creative, a lot of things on what we do, and we do address a lot of issues. You'd be surprised that probably, out of the people to come in, it's probably fifty percent to come in with parents, and then the other fifty percent come in with guardians, or uncle, or auntie, or sister, or someone other than a parent that comes in, that are trying to take the responsibility from an absent parent or parents doing their job in that respect. So it becomes real challenging and just to look at the household dynamics as far as what you're dealing with, because sometimes the environment is overcrowded, meaning you take in two or three children in your own household where you already have two or three children. So the dynamics of that is complicated from time to time.
So, Yolanda, and this is a thought maybe for you and the chief, have you ever been to line up with the cops and gone over what you do, that this is not a punitive system? To let them know, because I know, we have the best cops in the state. And I know from some of my friends, they don't want to write the tickets because they're afraid it's going to be an economic hardship to these children and their families. But what I'm hearing is the hardship might be them not getting into the program to begin with.
Well, I can tell you, that had been the case. I have had meetings with officers, the supervisors over the different...
But have you gone to line up to talk to every single one?
Not everyone, no. No, I have not.
As I know from being a boss, and as I know from being an employee, sometimes things from the boss to the employee and the employee to the boss don't quite make it by just accident. So maybe going to line up to talk to a big group of them, so they'd understand what your program is. They'd understand that it's not a punitive program, but it is a restorative program.
Yes. And I can do that. But yes, I have been meeting with officers, because they'll come by daily, I see them. And again, we have had meetings with the superiors that have been come up with creative ways as far as, sometimes when you bring a juvenile in, of course, they can't be housed in the jail. So you're taking an officer off the street, or you're taking the CIC, that is taking them off our streets to drive across town. So we've created where they can do a release form by filling that out, cite the juvenile, and they can take them home. But then we have the contact information and being able to reach out to the parent to take care of that, instead of them having to be brought here to the jail, and then the officer's having to wait on a parent or a legal guardian to come and get the youth. They're all receptive. They did, again, have that where, because at one point in time it was, just fines and fees. They are starting, they're coming around. It's a slow process, but I definitely can set up where I can go to the lineups.
Chief, would you have a problem with that?
So, I can, I will reach out.
Chief, would you have a problem with her coming to line up and talking? Thank you.
So, I know, okay, you were saying the numbers is low, Sean, so you're saying that if a child's squatting wrong, they need to be written up for a ticket? I'm just...
No, I'm saying what Judge Porter said.
You know, everything don't need, sometimes you just, sometimes...
But I'm just going back to what Judge Porter said.
Sometimes a police, if he sees that the child is just made, just the wrong thing, don't mean they need a ticket. That's just saying, everybody in the world, if you just look and do the wrong thing, a lot of people should have tickets, they don't get tickets.
I'm going back to what I asked Judge Porter, and he said...
I think we're getting a little off subject.
Excuse me.
So let's bring it back in.
That was my statement.
First off, Yolanda, you guys do great work. Thank you for being here today.
That's right.
Judge Porter, thank you for the work you do for our community.
Yes, sir.
You're a great man. We're lucky to have you here working with us, so... Yeah, Marion, I'm sorry, I forgot about you. Thank you for the presentation. And Judge, again, thank you for taking the time.
And I would just like to say this, that don't mean that we want our police to go out and just look for these kids if they're doing something wrong. Okay, thank you very much.
That's not what everybody wants, Christine.
Okay, got it.
If I could, just really quickly, I just want to say, Judge Porter, that before I even got on council, I was at a council meeting that you were at, and you talked about your approach with the juveniles in our community.
Yes, ma'am.
And I just want to thank you for what you do with our juveniles.
I understand.
And I believe in the deterrence aspect, and I certainly appreciate the numbers, and I pray that that is because of a reduced recidivism and a deterrent effect that y'all are having. So thank you.
And I remember that first time you were at the city council, yes, ma'am.
Again, if there's anything that we can do to help you guys, we're doing that too, okay?
I'm on board.
Okay. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you, guys.
Thank you all, great presentation. Thank you very much. Thank you for all you do for the children and the youth.
Okay, we'll move on to the rest of our agenda. Items five, Mr. Lyon.
Discussing consideration of approval of the collective bargaining agreement between the city of Midwest City and the International Association of Firefighters, IAFF Local 2066, as negotiated to be effective July 1 through June 30, 2020. Troy's here to answer any questions.
Yes.
So this CBA includes merit increases, as we discussed previously. And other than that, really, there's, Troy, any?
There's a backstop in case things get bad on the merit increases. In case we, there's an equal amount that we can hold back in case the budget turns south and the money's not there, it's covered. The others is just updates as far as healthcare premiums, our drug policy, the times, the dates on the contract.
So the backstop is, thank you, Troy, and good job this year with this, the backstop is something FIRE presented that they would be willing to backstop their, the same cost as their merit increase would be. And this was before our sales tax, two last two months have come in, was negotiated. They have stuck to their agreement without any changes. I have agreed with them that... I have agreed with them that the chances are we won't need that backstop, we don't believe. So we won't institute that unless there is a significant financial decline in our, in our budgets, so.
And there's mechanisms in there to, or to reopen or to.
Yeah, and there's a wage reopener. That's in January for, if sales tax continues to be solid, a wage reopener in January for cost of living. And this will retro back to July 1 as well.
Is there any questions? Mr. Bradley.
Good job, Troy. Your first bu, your first contract.
Wage reopeners across the board for all, both contracts, which is second one plus the non, correct?
That's correct, Councilman Byrne.
Any further questions? Chair, entertain a motion to approve. Got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Next item, Mr. Bradley. I assume Mayor's the first item.
Very much so, yes. There's a.
Well, it is, it is a bit different. Lonnie left, I think we wore him out unless he's still here somewhere else.
The, the, the FOP contract does not include the drug policy. And instead of offering up the, the backstop necessarily right at first, we're negotiating, or we'll discuss that in January for the sick leave incentive. If things are, are bad, they've fully agreed that they want the, what's best for the city. If it's financially not viable, we'll withhold that. The, the healthcare premiums are slightly different, but the, the same total amounts. It's just the, the way they're included for pension in, in fires, slightly different than the, the rest of the city. The, the duration is the same, retro to July 1 this year through June 30 next year.
Any questions, comments? Troy, this is your first time doing CBAs, right? Good job.
I felt like I got cheated a little bit with COVID, but yeah, I'm excited to get it done.
Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
I got a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. Thanks, Troy.
Thank you all.
And I'd like to just on record say at the next council meeting, Kristi will be bringing an item for merit increases for the rest of the city employees. It's not on this.
Retro to July.
It'll be retro to July 1 for your approval.
Okay, item number seven, Mr. Lyon.
Discussion and consideration of emergency ordinance amending Chapter 11 City Emergency Management by adding 11-4 face coverings and social distancing during COVID-19 pandemic emergencies, setting out definitions, setting out exceptions, providing expiration date and grounds for extension or reduction of expiration date, penalties and provider for repeal or severability and declaring an emergency.
Ladies and gentlemen of the council, I would have one ask on this particular issue. Is that the date in the ordinance is in November, I would ask that we roll that back till September? And then if needed, come back in September and extend it as conditions warrant.
Can we do it to where we have to vote no in September instead of it automatically expiring?
Uh, correct. I mean, if, if the conditions do not warrant for us to extend it, then nothing will be back, back before the council.
I'd like it to come back before the council for us to determine that.
I'm sorry?
I'd like it to come back to the council on that September for us to vote to, to.
Oh, I see. That, that's no issue, that's no issue. I just don't want us to extend past the areas in the metropolitan area. Because everyone has placed their expiration date at September. September 8th is the, the one that's most common. So that's the only ask I have at council.
So we brought this, this ordinance to the council after we have been identifying a rise in our positive cases in Midwest City and I've really focused on Midwest City. And look, also I've stayed in contact with our hospital administrator, Clay Franklin, about how many people are in the hospital and watching the numbers, which have. The, the numbers of positive COVIDs in our, in our zip codes and we cross check those in 911 every day so that we can let our police and fire know that when they're entering a house that there may be a COVID issue there. And we appreciate those numbers to, for safety for our public safety members. But also, the goal of this is, is for public safety and for the safety of our community and we wouldn't be asking for this if we didn't see the rise in numbers. We have Phil May Tubby from Oklahoma City County Health Department is going to get up and talk about statistics just for a couple of minutes.
Thanks for taking time to be out here, Mr. May Tubby. We appreciate it. We know where, you're a busy guy.
I should have told you 7:30.
That's okay. This is really important. So I've, I've just given you a briefing and it's being handed around. I mean, I think you all are quite aware that our numbers are not going down. So, I mean, we're, we're seeing some pretty exponential growth if you look at, if you go back a month, we're at double the cases we were a month ago. So this is something that we really need to do. It's probably the most effective way and the most equitable way for your community to be protected. And it's not just about your community, it's about your businesses. I mean, this provides better access for everybody because that way people, the, the public doesn't lose confidence in the, in their ability to go out to places like to eat or to go get their haircut or whatever it is. I mean, this is the things that's going to keep our economy rolling. So this is why we're pushing on this. And I wanted to focus on one particular element down here because it's, it's become quite the element. And that's that 48 to 62% of our total infections are pre-symptomatic or asymptomatic. So what that means is half the people that have it don't know it or they're asymptomatic. So you may be getting exposed by somebody who looks perfectly normal. This is why the mask ordinance is so important, because it takes care of that element. So just to let you know, we, our executive director, Dr. Patrick McGough, had a call yesterday from Dr. Burks from the White House Coronavirus Task Force encouraging Oklahoma County to mask up. Where, where, if you, if you look at the, there's a national map that kind of lists counties and they have a code system that's red, orange and yellow. We're the ones right below red and they're worried we're going to go red. So this is the reason that we want to get the mask ordinance in place. There's already 11 other cities that have done mask ordinances. And I think you're going to see a lot more here in the metro. I think we, this will be the fourth or fifth in the metro. So if you have any questions specifically, I'll be glad to answer any that you have. Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I'm sorry. I got it, I apologize. The second point on your outline about today, 212 cases mostly backlog, is by backlog, do you mean like the delay in the test results? I didn't, I didn't understand.
Yes, ma'am. So, you know, we still have issues with the state database, the acute disease database. Just, but to their, they're really trying to fix it. CDC's been here for the last two or three weeks. And they're, they're trying to put a fix in place for the state health department's acute disease database. So we're, we're quite optimistic that that's going to occur and that will really fix some of these issues.
Do you know what the seven day rolling? Do you know what the seven day rolling average has been?
I've got it back here. I've got it back here, but the problem with the seven day rolling average is we're, we're backfilling for five days. So the seven day rolling average is, I mean, it's, it's a target, but it's artificially low on the, on the, on the end. So that's why you'll see now on our, on our graphs, the last four or five days are grayed out because we know there's going to be backfilled data put into those.
One other thing too, and this is kind of a loaded question. And I think, I want to thank you personally because over the last couple of months, between you and Debbie, you have kept us advised. We've had multiple phone conversations. Phil and I go way back, so he, he's a phone call away day or night as.
Yeah.
As the city manager.
On the weekend.
And I, I can't stress the importance that, you know, he's talking about these groups in Oklahoma's and we are just very, very, very close to being in the worst place we can be as far as this COVID deal goes. We're in the orange now in Oklahoma County has actually surpassed Tulsa County in the amount of infections. And the other numbers are, are messed up because of the rollback and it's, it's, it's difficult and we realize that for you to have the actual numbers every day. But the important thing, I, I, it's very important is that the pediatric cases are going up now.
They are.
And that, there for a long time, we were told that the kids were safe. In the numbers in Oklahoma, there's been 35, 3,598 kid cases. We can't have that. I mean, and that's, I mean, those are the kids are innocent, they, they have no choice. And, you know, the little ones, that's, we, we, that's unacceptable and we've got to do whatever it takes. And you can get on the internet and you can see all these theories about whether masks work or masks don't work. And, and when this is all said and done, there'll, there'll probably be a big white paper that, well, not everything we heard from the government was accurate. But for us not to act on this, on the possibility that a mask will work is, is, I just can't accept that. Because there's, the data's out there, Oklahoma, even the governor's numbers, he's gone to a code system, the color system. And we are, Oklahoma County is now in the moderate risk. And it's, it's, one of the first things on his guidelines is wear a mask in public. And, and that's the only thing we're asking and, and it's not only a safety deal, but it's what's going to keep our economy going. We, we rolled the dice when we shut down the economy in March. We really, we were lucky. We can't do that again. We've got to keep it open and wearing masks does.
We agree with you.
I wholeheartedly agree.
I think these young ladies want to speak too.
Okay. Did, did you guys want to come up and talk or are you good with what the discussion is right now?
They've like waited.
You did wait.
I waited.
Could you say your, your name and address and you have the floor?
Yes, Lindsey Outt, 912 Covington, Ward 6 with Mr. Favors. I had a whole speech prepared, but you all are so well informed. I'm very impressed. I'm impressed with how everyone is looking at this pandemic. I'm, I'm very impressed. So I will put that aside and tag onto some comments from this gentleman here. And then make a separate comment for your consideration in the details of, of this motion. I do want to mention, there was an article that came out today on vaccines. The vaccines are entering phase two and three trials and then they did give a timeline. It was an ABC News article today. So they were expecting the FDA approval, if everything goes well in these next trials in October, manufacture and production, hopefully being ready for the public in December. So that gives you sort of maybe a timeline on when we can finally start to get out of this thing. I do have a slight issue with shortening the timeframe of the mask wearing to September 8th based on when the schools open. So as I understand it, with the timeframes on when things are reported, school is supposed to start in Middel August 14th. That would give us one full week in school, the next week. And then there's two weeks after that until we would come back here to reconsider the mask ordinance. I don't think that's enough time to paint an accurate picture on the effect that the mask ordinance would have on the kids, if that makes sense. I know that masks are going to be required with, in the schools. But I think that, that picture, if you look at the, the numbers on September 8th, that would be what happened the first week of school. I don't think that's long enough. I think there needs to be maybe the end of September for you to see the true first month of school pediatric cases. So if you could just consider maybe a later date than September 8th, I think that would give you a more accurate picture.
September 30th would be acceptable.
As far as including what's happening in the schools, in the area as well.
The important thing too also, and just chiming in, Mr. May Tubby, I think one of the issues that we're worried about was the 4th of July, there was a huge spike. The next spike they're worried about is Labor Day weekend, which would be September 5th. So September 8th would be, we wouldn't see the spike. The normal spike would be the week or so after. Is that correct?
It's usually about 14 days. So that's, that's one decade period.
So what the mayor just said, September 30th would be.
That's acceptable.
The 30th is a Wednesday. Our next scheduled meeting will be September 22nd.
Let's go with the 22nd so.
Okay. All right, that's.
With understanding that we're going to look at it.
Yes.
And if we need to.
Vote no if you.
We don't, we would just reestablish.
Okay.
We would have to, we would have to reestablish the ordinance.
Okay, so if you go September 22nd, that'll give you three weeks of in-school data. Is that enough?
And, and Labor Day.
And Labor Day, yeah.
So, so hey, we're all watching it. Actually, I talk to these guys every week.
Okay, yes, I hear that, so.
Every Friday.
Set my other speed aside for that.
So they're, they're getting informed, so.
Okay, thank you. The only other issue I would ask for consideration is if you can, maybe laying out some criteria on how the masks should be worn. For example, I did go to get some food at a restaurant this week and I noticed that the mask was being worn like this and like this at a restaurant. So for your consideration, if you would mind maybe laying out how they should be worn properly, I would appreciate that as well to the, to the public. And that's, that's all I have.
Okay, well Claudia, would you like to come up real quick? She's. Section 3. We can do some education on that, that is.
It actually does specify in section 3 that every person in Midwest City should wear a face covering over the nose and mouth, worn consistent with CDC guidelines when inside a commercial entity or other building, structure or space open to the public.
But we'll do, we'll do education.
We can do more, but we, it is specifically addressed in there.
It's, it's a good suggestion because you're right, I see the same thing.
Yeah, thank you.
Claudia, you want to talk about the education function of this and then we'll have Brandon come up after you.
Sure. Mayor and council, I just wanted to let you know, we have already been working on some FAQs that we can make available on our website. And one of the things we do is link to the CDC section on mask and how to wear a mask and taking that into consideration. So as part of our education, we will link to that CDC information. And then we have put together some signs that we're going to have on our website as well. So they're signs that businesses, if they don't have a way to make a sign, can print these, it's just a PDF, they can print them off, put them on their business and it just gives some information about saying that a mask is required in public places, but also saying that you can find more information on our website and listing the website address. So we do have a plan to get information out and the talking points are similar to the FAQs that will be available for staff who take calls if anyone has any questions.
So those are going to be on the website after, after, if the council approves this tonight.
Right, exactly.
Along with the signs.
Yes.
And we have some signs in the back of the room if anyone would like to take them with them.
We do have some at the back that have been printed out if someone would like to pick them up.
She doesn't want to talk.
Okay. Going once, going twice, this is your chance to be a star.
Thanks, Claudia.
I'm Jana Berger, 1276 Three Oak Circle. Thank you, Pat, for inviting me. This is my first city council meeting. I'm very passionate on face coverings for our community, protecting our essential workers. And I'm very excited that we've had such a great presentation, that you guys are well informed and that you want to keep us safe. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here, Jana. With all that being said, Chair, entertain a motion with the change in the.
Make a motion to approve it with the expiration date for, to us, for us to revisit it on September 22nd, 2020.
I've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Extinction, motion carries. We do have an emergency attached to this and I would entertain a motion to pass the emergency.
Motion, motion.
We had a motion and a second, any discussion? All in favor indicates saying aye.
Before we close it, did we want Brandon to talk?
Before the emergency?
We.
Well, we can just say a few words right after we vote, we can, if you want.
Okay, I'm getting like multiple inputs. Do we want Brandon to come up here or not?
Yeah, let's go ahead and vote. I mean, is that okay? City attorney?
I don't know why you have to do a roll call, but.
An emergency? Emergency, don't we have to? Okay.
No, we just have to do a second vote.
You've made us in the past.
You've made us in the past.
All in favor indicate saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention? Motion carries. Chief Claves, would you like to address the council?
While Brandon's coming up and Debbie can, we're, we were going to, we're going to publicize this as a non-emergency if there's calls from the public regarding any type of complaints. And the number is seven-three-nine-one-three-eight-eight is our non-emergency nine-one-one number. So we will publish that. Debbie will handle that. She has started a protocols for the nine-one-one dispatchers to handle, um, any complaints from this ordinance.
What is that number again?
We, uh, we had a robust discussion with city manager, our emergency manager and staff from the police department references new ordinance, emergency ordinance. And I'd like for Debbie Wagner, our emergency manager, to talk about the screening process because we know we'll get calls as we had before on social distancing. So Debbie came up with a great idea after our discussion that we really needed a process when they get a call through nine-one-one or, or the non-emergencies. I'll turn it over to Debbie to talk about that first.
Good evening. As Chief Claves said, we felt it would be good to provide our dispatchers with some questions so that we could get all of the needed information from people who are calling in to talk about, uh, when they thought if someone wasn't wearing a mask or they weren't wearing it correctly. There are two scenarios that we would be addressing in this instance. One would be a business.
Microphone down.
Oh, I'm sorry. I always forget, I'm so short. A business that is not enforcing the mask ordinance, for example, um, and asking, uh, the person who's reporting if they've spoken to the manager, um, and then, uh, you know, what, what kind of actions we're going to take from there. And then the other scenario would be a person, a, a business reporting a customer who has been informed of or reminded about the mask ordinance and refusing to comply. And so, um, what kind of actions we would take from there? Um, you know, did you ask them to wear a mask? What was their response? What is going on at this point? Are they causing a disturbance and all of those types of things? So needing to, uh, be able to send the appropriate response, if any, and, uh, support our businesses as well as our residents in terms of keeping everybody safe. Somebody have any question?
I'm due. I'm sorry.
Yes, ma'am.
And, um, to either of you and or to Ms. Claudia, as far as the information rollout, um, is there going to be something that is going to be not just available on the webpage, but something that we could have perhaps emailed to us or et cetera, that we could be able to share it as a social media file? Sorry. Share it as a social media file or email it to people who have questions if they contact us so that way we can just streamline the information.
Yeah, Claudia.
She said she was going to do some social media work, I think tomorrow morning, uh, assuming, uh, that we.
She's upstairs right now.
Okay.
Yes, we'll, we'll take, we will do that.
Yes, ma'am.
Jill, we'll make sure that happens.
Yes.
Thank you. That way we can just send it out and there's no, you know, it doesn't get watered down in the middle or confused in the middle. It's a straight out, this is what the city says, see it and here's an extra copy for you type of thing.
Absolutely. Thank you.
So I want to ask you, so the seven-three-nine-one-three-eight-eight is considered to be a COVID-nineteen, uh, you know, non-emergency?
No, ma'am, it's simply a non-emergency.
It's just non-emergency entirely, okay.
So we, we just really want to discourage folks from calling nine-one-one to report a mask.
Okay.
Infraction, if you will.
But you really don't want people calling nine-one-one because someone's not wearing a mask?
No, we don't. That's why we, no.
Now, as a.
I didn't think so. I'm just saying.
No, absolutely not.
The seven-three-nine-one-three-eight-eight, okay.
Correct, yes.
As a business owner, I, I, in my business, people have been wearing masks since May fifth, when I went to appointment only, I've had zero problems. If some people grouse, we have zero problems. But if a business owner has somebody that comes in, refuses to leave and not a mask, that's a nine-one-one call, would it not be? Because they are trespassing at that point.
Uh, I think so. That's more of a, to his claims question.
Absolutely. You all have given us the tools to address this, you know, we're going to educate, we're going to persuade and we're going to enforce, but you're absolutely right, Councilman Reed, could be a disorderly conduct, illegal trespass. If, if it rises to that criminal level, we're going to respond.
I like the fact that we're not giving tickets because that's, your cops don't need to be driving down the street, see somebody without a mask and pull over and give them a ticket. That's kind of a waste of time. But it's, and that will help you to respond to those businesses that call.
Right. I, I think you've seen, first of all, my wife thanks you and the council for passing this. I get this every day when I get home from work is when is Midwest going to pass this ordinance? So thank you for doing that on behalf of my family. And, uh, you, you have given us the tools through this ordinance, which I believe from Heatherpool is an adoption from something that Tulsa has in place. And I think it's going to be very feasible for us to, to utilize. As I said, we'll educate, we'll persuade, we will enforce if we have to. Uh, we've had several conversations with businesses to this point about how we'll need their help in educating our public. And I think Claudia will do a great job of educating. Great idea by Ms. Eads to put something out for you all to give to your constituents as to how we perform this specific ordinance. In my, when I'm out in Midwest City on a daily basis, it looks like most people are wearing masks now, which is really good. So, uh, I do, as a close, I want to say thank you to Phil May Tubby. I agree with Councilman Byrne. He's been a friend of mine for years. He's a recognized, not only in Oklahoma County, but nationally as far as in the health field. And I really appreciate what you do for us at the agency. Uh, we had a critical situation early on with COVID-nineteen that we had to deal with, with Mr. May Tubby. He worked through us, the ME's office to protect our emergency responders and it wouldn't have been done without this man here. So I think we give him a big round of applause for what he's done. Anybody have any more questions than me?
Any questions, comments? Thank you, Chief. Thank you, Ms. Wagner. We appreciate it. All right, that was the biggie.
Goes, yes, immediately.
It's in effect immediately.
It's, uh, in effect now.
Move into, uh, discussion item number eight. Mr. Lyon?
Discussion and consideration of passing, approving and ordinance amending chapter forty-three, water, sewer, sewage disposal and stormwater quality of the Midwest City Code by amending Article Three Sewers and Sewage Disposal, Division Eight, U siege rates and charges, section forty-three dash two-twenty-four, sewer use, user charge, section forty-three two-twenty-seven, annual review of user charge rates, section forty-three two-thirty, capital improvement charges, establish an effective date and repealer for, um, inseverability. Mr. Streets?
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council.
Good evening.
It's good to see you this evening. I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, present some information for your consideration. What you have before you is actually, uh, a sewer rate adjustment. And it was the culmination of a lot of effort by multiple departments. And I think I'd be remiss if I didn't take a moment to thank those people. There are a few in the, in the auditorium tonight. Uh, one, Kristy Barron, for her efforts to help provide the information we needed to set some targets for that adjustment. Sarah Hancock, who graciously made the adjustments to the ordinance, the, the red line and the clean copy. Justin Madison, who did a lot of research looking at other communities, along with Susan Mollendorf, who is in the city clerk's office. And lastly, Chris Thomas, um, at the wastewater treatment plant, who took the time to look at what his maintenance costs might be over a ten to twenty-year period. I would also like to thank the city manager's office for giving me the opportunity to put this together and get it in front of council. It's something we've needed for a long time. We've, we have, for us to safely and effectively deliver sewer water, wastewater to our treatment plant, it's important that we, that we make sure that we have the appropriate funding in place. Unfortunately, as you'll see in the rate comparison with other communities that are in our area, we are grossly underfunded. The way to fix that is to make some changes, make an adjustment and put some, put in place some pieces in the ordinance that allow us to make adjustments in the future that don't require the same catch-up that we're having to do tonight. So I obviously offer you the, the, uh, the information that's attached to this agenda item and welcome any questions you might have regarding this adjustment.
I'd like to remind the council, we have, how many frozen positions, Paul? Seven?
Yes.
Seven frozen positions in, on the line crew, um, because of, we don't have the funding to maintain a five percent fund balance. And we have, our capital outlay in this account is a little of nothing in order just to get to this point.
And I would like to point out to council as well that, um, I've been in touch with Mr. Streets along, all, all the way through this, and we still are the lowest in the metropolitan area as far as our rates. So that argument is off the table as far as when people are going to make that argument. Cause we're still the lowest in the metropolitan area as far as our rates go and, and they do an outstanding job out there. They really do, so.
Okay, I'm confused though by that statement because the sewer rate comparison in our packet says Norman is lower than we are.
Well, if you look at Norman, they also charge the same thing for water. So obviously, I, I mean.
What I'll tell you, uh, Councilwoman Eads is you're correct. After the adjustment, the first two thousand gallons, that minimum cost, Norman will be less than Midwest City.
Okay.
However, there are other rates that come into play as there is higher usage, their rate per thousand gallons, for instance. I just had to find, because everybody charges sewer differently from one community to the next, we had to find a middle ground, a way to make an equitable decision with regard to the comparison of these rates. So we picked the first two thousand gallons plus the minimum, which gives you an equitable way to compare the rates from these communities which are on that sheet of paper. And as you'll notice, we are currently at ten oh six, which if you compare it to Edmund, for instance, is nearly a third of what their rate is. And that twenty-eight sixteen will be over thirty dollars in the next year and a half to two years. When you look at some of these other communities, Dell City is also going to implement a rate increase based upon their interim city manager's discussion that I had last week. You've got multiple cities here which are actually putting into place rate increases because it's becoming more and more expensive to treat and be, and meet the regulatory burden placed on them by the state of Oklahoma.
Sorry, I turned off the mic because there's too much feedback. I did note though, in the, uh, proposed ordinance, there's a sliding scale essentially for how this is going to.
Correct.
Um, excuse the phrase, but escalate up.
Correct.
So that it's not going to be immediate jump.
Correct. Instead of, based upon the recommendation of the city manager's office and our finance director, the feeling was that if we tried to pass a rate tomorrow that would actually meet what we believe our economic shortfall or our burden to provide those services might be, it would be too significant for most residents. So instead, we chose the model, the, the, we chose to use the model that actually Sarah Hancock had developed along with Justin Madison for the water rates, which was a smaller or incremental increase over five years rather than a significant increase immediately.
Paul, sewer is an enterprise fund, correct?
Correct.
So to those three people that might be listening on YouTube, maybe explain.
I'm listening, Sean.
You're the YouTube star, but you've got the voice. Explain how an enterprise fund is different than every, any other fund that the city has because it has to be run like a business. It doesn't have to make money, but we can't lose money on it.
Correct.
Can you fill it out a little bit? So that's one of the things that people think that we're raising this so we can take the money and use it in other funds.
Yes, you, you, that's a, that is an observation that some have made. When it comes to an enterprise fund or anything that's funded with utility rates, we have an obligation to not make money. So those rates are dedicated to support those services, those essential services that we provide, water, sewer, trash, et cetera. And what happened is that in the past, in our ordinance, there was an opportunity, there was some language that allowed us to review and, and adjust ordinances annually based upon the needs, the financial or fiscal needs to provide those services. But unfortunately, that wasn't done. So what we're dealing with now is we're looking at over ten million dollars of, of, of money that unfortunately wasn't budgeted, capital expenses that were cut, which puts us behind the eight ball and unfortunately makes it very difficult for us to do the job safely and efficiently. If this change is made, what we're looking at is trying to do a zero, make some capital infrastructure improvements and invest in our, because right now our collection system is in serious need of repair. And by doing this, by making these changes and adding a little bit of money to the CIP and making the changes will help balance out our operational costs, our budget from year to year and give us a sustainable approach to meet the needs and obligations of our community over the next five years.
And is this the last of the enterprise funds that we've not done this with?
No, sir.
We, we have one more to do it with?
Correct.
Okay. So now that we did rates, okay. We've been fixing it over the last couple of years.
Correct. We started with sanitation at the recommendation, I think of council and the city manager's office to put in a, an, an, an escalator that's tied to the consumer price index utility rates. And that's, so it did address the one in sanitation. We're doing wastewater now. We have not done the water and we have not done stormwater or drainage.
Water expired. You did an escalator, but it expired.
But it's not tied to the CPI, which is the piece that you were talking about.
Yeah. We need to, we need to address that at some point. And the only reason I'm bringing up the enterprise funds is a city is not designed, parks, pools, green belts, they don't make money, they lose money. They're a quality of life thing. Now, I would argue that water and sewer is way more than a quality of life, but they're designed to break even. And we need to make sure that's what they do.
Correct.
Well, you're doing more than breaking even, aren't you? I mean, you would have to.
You need to put money back on capital expenditures to fix stuff that breaks.
Yeah. We, and that's just, um, Councilwoman Allen, that's, that's one of the issues we've had is that we've not been able, that we weren't even breaking even. We were operating at a deficit of a million and a half dollars over the last several years, which means that we were having to take or use money wherever we could find, or just cut, primarily cut. Those, so anything we needed to purchase, we've got equipment and Von can speak to this because he was the prior public works director. The equipment, the fleet in the sewer department is on average ten years older than any other department in the city.
We've been using the Strothman Fund that really should be for capital. We've been using it for operations and that's.
Okay.
We, we need to not do that. And we need a more aggressive clean-out program and this will allow us for, to get our line crew guys hired and get back to doing the preventive maintenance. And we're seeing more and more backups in houses and risk management and we've paid a couple of pretty big bills for floors.
And that's due to the fact that Tim mentioned it. So when you were short seven people, which is a third of the department, and the people that have to be on call, we've got guys that are working, have way more comp time they're supposed to carry. It's a, it's a difficult thing to manage and these, and these guys work their tail off. So, yeah, I, I, and I appreciate what they do. Frankly, you know, without them, we couldn't be successful. Those are the guys that, that are in there, the guys and gals that are there every day doing their job at Public Works for everyone here.
And in the sewer, it's a job most of us would not want to do.
Yeah. Indeed.
I'm very thankful for them. I appreciate the talk.
Is there any further question? Is there any further question, Mr. Street? Chair, entertain a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Motion to approve.
Second, oh.
I have a motion in a second. All in favor indicate saying aye. Opposed? Abstentions? Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Street.[1677.02]
Thank you very much.
We now move into the new business public discussion. Anything, anybody have anything to bring forth, council? Hearing none. There is, uh, several items of further information you need to review as council, uh, and we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Midwest City Municipal Authority. We have a consent agenda, uh, and I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Motion, motion to approve.
Second. A motion is second. Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Uh, does anyone have anything to bring forth authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Call to order the Midwest City Memorial Hospital Authority. We do have a consent agenda. I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Any further discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. We have one discussion item, Mr. Lyon.
No action needed.
No action needed. We move into the public, uh, business public discussion. Does anyone have anything to bring forth authority? Hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Call to order the Midwest City Special Economic Authority. We do have a consent agenda and would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
Any discussion? All in favor, any saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Anybody have anything to bring forth authority under public, uh, discussion? Seeing or hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. I call to order the Special City of Midwest Utilities Authority agenda, and we do have a consent agenda, and I would entertain a motion to approve.
Motion to approve, second.
I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? All in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention, motion carries. Uh, public discussion. Anyone have anything to bring forth authority? Seeing or hearing none, we are hereby adjourned. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.